Good afternoon. It is 1:02 PM, Wednesday, May 18. This is a public hearing of the Town of Brookhaven Industrial Development Agency, also referred to as the Brookhaven IDA. My name is Frederick C. Braun III, and I am chairman of the IDA. I am joined today by the following board members: Martin Callahan, Felix Grucci, Lenore Paprocki, Gary Polcoski, and Anne Marie Scheit. Brookhaven IDA member Frank Trotta has recused from this meeting. They form his presence. Also with us today is Lisa Mulligan, the IDA's chief executive officer. Today's public hearing has been convened in accordance with Chapter 56, the laws of 2022, effective April 9, 2022, permitting local governments to hold public hearings by telephone and video conference. This afternoon's public hearing is being held electronically via video conference call instead of in-person for the public to physically attend. Members of the public may watch, listen to, and participate in the public hearing by making oral comments and/or by submitting written comments concerning the matters present at the public hearing. The public has been provided with the ability to view and participate in this afternoon's public hearing via both Zoom and telephone. Instructions for logging in and/or calling in have been provided in the public notice which was published in Newsday, mailed to affected property owners, and published on the IDA's website for all to view. I've been advised that the link for the public hearing is active and working. Once again, you can log onto this webinar by going to zoom.us/join and entering webinar ID 867-6056-6198, and the passcode is 891359. And also, call into the Zoom meeting by telephone by calling 646-558-8656, entering webinar ID 867-9056-6198, and the passcode 891359. Let me repeat that. You can join, you can log into the webinar by going to zoom.us/join and entering webinar ID 867-9056-6198. You can also call into the Zoom, excuse me, and passcode 891359, and also call into the Zoom meeting by telephone by calling 646-558-8656, and then entering the webinar ID 867-9056-6198, and the passcode 891359. If you have any questions during the hearing about accessing the Zoom video conference, you can email a-beldiac@vhv.com for assistance. Let me repeat that. A-b is in boy, E-L, N is in Nancy, I-A-K, at V is in Victor, H Hotel, and B is in Bravo for assistance. Please note that this public hearing is being recorded. I now need a motion from a board member to open the public hearing. Don't move.
Felix Grucci.
Gary Polcoski.
Just a second. On the vote.
Yes.
Mr. Grucci?
Yes.
Mr. Paprocki?
Yes.
Mr. Polcoski?
Yes.
Mrs. Scheit?
Yes.
Mr. Braun votes yes, motion carries. I will now introduce the IDA's counsel, Mr. Stephen Angel, to discuss the topic of today's public hearing. Stephen?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Braun. Good afternoon. My name is Steve Angel. I'm with the firm of Essex, Hefter, Angel, Ditalia, and Pasca in Riverhead, and we are counsel to the Town of Brookhaven Industrial Development Agency with respect to today's hearing. During the course of the hearing, the Industrial Development Agency, as reflected by Mr. Braun's comments, will also be referred to occasionally as the IDA. Today's hearing is being held pursuant to Sections 201 and 203 of the New York eminent domain procedure law in order to inform the public and to review the public use to be served by a proposed public project. The project in question involves the comprehensive redevelopment of land within the town of Brookhaven that's near the Ronconcomah Station of the Long Island Railroad. The project is called the Ronconcomah Hub, H-U-B, Hub Project. This hearing will also inform the public about the project and review the impact of the project on the environment and on residents of the locality where the project will be constructed. The IDA Board will consider other pertinent information, such as maps, descriptions of the properties which the IDA is considering acquiring, and other adjacent parcels. I should let you know that this is the second public hearing being held pursuant to Sections 201 and 203 of the New York eminent domain procedure law for this project. The first public hearing was held on November 16, 2021. The transcript of that hearing, that first hearing, and all the documents submitted as part of that public hearing are available to be reviewed by anyone on the IDA's website, which is www.brookhavenida, that's one word, Brookhaven I-D-A, one word, dot O-R-G. Any person in attendance at this hearing shall be given a reasonable opportunity to present oral or written statements and submit such other documents concerning the project as they feel are relevant. A record of the hearing will be kept, including the written statements which are submitted. Copies of the record will be available to the public for examination without cost during normal business hours at the principal office of the Brookhaven IDA, which is located at 1 Independence Hill Farmingville, New York, the zip code's 11738, and also at the office of the Suffolk County Clerk located at 310 Center Drive in Riverhead, and the zip code there is 11901. Copies shall also be made available for examination on the IDA's website, which as stated before is www.brookhavenida.org. Copies will be produced by the IDA upon written request. If you want the IDA to produce the copies, upon payment of the cost of copying. Purpose of today's hearing is to present and gather information related to the potential acquisition of parcels of property located in the vicinity of the Ronconcomah Station of the Long Island Railroad through the IDA's statutory authority, which is in the general municipal law, and the power of eminent domain. There are six parcels of real property involved in today's hearings, today's hearing. And I'll give you their addresses and their tax map numbers. That's Suffolk County tax map numbers. The first is 17 Garrity Avenue, Ronconcomah. All of them, all of these parcels are in Suffolk County Tax Map District 200. So that would be 17 Garrity Avenue is 200, District 200, Section 799, Block 3, Lot 32. The second parcel is 14 Hawkins Avenue, Ronconcomah, Section 799, Block 3, Lot 33.1. The third is 44 Railroad Avenue, Ronconcomah, Section 799, Block 3, Lot 34. The fourth is 71 Railroad Avenue, Section 799, Block 3, Lot 35. The fifth is 69 Railroad Avenue, Section 799 again, Block 3, Lot 36. And finally, the sixth parcel is 63 Railroad Avenue, again, Section 799, Block 3, and this one is Lot 39. The issues that we're going to discuss, that are going to be discussed today, are, one, the public use or benefit or purpose to be served by the project; two, the approximate location of the project and the reasons for selection of that location; three, the general effect of the project on the environment and the residents of the locality; and four, such other factors as the IDA considers relevant to be discussed. The Board will hear from various speakers regarding the public purpose, the location, and the environment, or the environmental impact in connection with this proposed acquisition of property. The first speaker after I conclude my introductory remarks will be Judge Mark Cohen, who will act as the moderator of today's hearing. Judge Cohen is a retired New York State Court of Claims judge and former acting Supreme Court Justice. Judge Cohen will facilitate the public hearing as moderator. Listen to him carefully, as he will be giving important information for those who really want, who want to speak and make comments. The second speaker will be Mr. John Wagner. Mr. Wagner will speak about the public use, benefit, and purpose to be served by the project, and the general effect of the project on the environment and residents of the locality. Mr. Wagner is an attorney and a member of the law firm of Sir Tillman, Ballin, Adler, and Hyman, LLP, who are the attorneys for Ronk Hub LLC, the master developer designated by the Town of Brookhaven for the Ronk Hub Project. Also here from the firm of Sir Tillman, Ballin, Adler, and Hyman is Alan Hyman, who is Mr. Wagner's fellow counsel representing the master developer, Ronk Hub. So, first speaker will be Judge Cohen, the second speaker will be Mr. Wagner, the third speaker will be Mr. Jim Coghlan, and Mr. Coghlan will discuss the project and the need for acquisition of these six parcels of property that are the subject of this public hearing. Mr. Coghlan is a representative of the master developer, Ronk Hub LLC. Documents will be offered for the record which address all these issues. Speakers will also include any members of the public who wish to speak regarding the relevant issues today. The hearing will be kept open for a period of 30 days after the conclusion of this oral portion of the hearing. That is, it'll be kept open until June 18, 2022, for the IDA Board to accept written comments from anyone who wishes to submit them. All written comments should be mailed to the IDA's office at 1 Independence Hill Farmingville, New York, 11738, or emailed to jlyntz, that's J as in John, L as in Larry, I as in Igor, N as in Nancy, S as in Steve, and E as in Edward, jlyntz@brookhavenny, Brookhaven NY, one word, dot gov. After the 30-day period has elapsed, the Board will review the minutes of this hearing, the documents presented, and will consider all the oral presentations and written comments that are going to be submitted. Thereafter, based upon the record, the IDA Board will vote on whether to take any action to acquire any of the six parcels that are the subject of this hearing. They will consider the adoption of a determination and findings and publish the same in accordance with the requirements of Section 204 of the eminent domain procedure law. Okay, now, as Mr. Braun mentioned, this hearing is being conducted virtually by Zoom pursuant to Chapter 56 of the laws of 2022. And I have, I would like to submit into the record of this hearing as exhibit one, a copy of the, a copy, an excerpt of Chapter 56 of the laws of 2022. And I should say that exhibit one, which is the excerpt, copy of the excerpt of the laws under which this is being conducted virtually, as well as all of the exhibits that I'm going to mention and Mr. Wagner's going to refer to, are already posted on the IDA's website. The IDA's legal notice requirements relating to the public hearing have been met by publishing the public notice in five successive issues of Newsday, starting on April 29, 2022, and ending on May 3, 2022, and by mailing the public notice, a copy of the public notice, to each of the affected property owners by certified mail return receipt requested. At this point, I am submitting the notice of public hearing into the record as exhibit number two. The cover letters accompanying the public notice are the notices of public hearing, for that matter, were sent to the owners of the property being discussed at this hearing, and a facsimile of that public, of that cover letter is being submitted as exhibit number three. The affidavit of service on the property owners, which shows the proper mailing thereto in accordance with the eminent domain procedure law, is being submitted as exhibit number four. The affidavit of publication from Newsday confirming the publication dates that I mentioned beforehand is being submitted as exhibit number five. And a map of the area that is being discussed today is being submitted as exhibit number six. In addition, to the publication in Newsday and the mailing of the notice of public hearing pursuant to the public owner, to the property owners, the Industrial Development Agency posted the notice of public hearing on its website on or about April 29, 2022, and the notice has remained posted through today. All of the documents, as I said, submitted to the Board at today's hearing will be available at the Town of Brookhaven IDA's office located at 1 Independence Hill Farmingville, New York, 11738, and at the office of the Suffolk County Clerk at 310 Center Drive, Riverhead, New York, 11901, after today's hearing. A transcribed record by a stenographer of today's hearing will be available at the IDA's office, on the IDA's website, and at the Suffolk County Clerk's office as well. At this point, with these introductory comments, I'd like to turn the hearing over to our moderator, Judge Mark Cohen. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, and good afternoon, everyone, and good afternoon, Mr. Angel. My name is Mark Cohen, and I will be moderating this afternoon's public hearing on behalf of the Board. As Mr. Angel mentioned, this afternoon's public hearing is being held pursuant to the eminent domain procedure law to hear information and obtain public comment regarding the Town of Brookhaven Industrial Development Agencies, that is, IDA, potential acquisition of real property already referenced near the Ronconcomah Station of the Long Island Railroad. Anyone who would like to speak at this hearing should use the "raise hand" and quote "feature" at the bottom of the Zoom screen. When we arrive at the point in the hearing for public comments, Mr. Alan Belniak, our technical advisor, will recognize persons wishing to make a statement. Please state your name, address, and interest in the proceeding. And I will remind you, please speak slowly and spell out your name and address so our reporter can get it accurately. I'll then announce your name as indicated on your Zoom profile, and you will have three minutes to comment on the issues before the Board. Please be mindful that your opportunity is to comment. If there are questions, you may state them, and they will be addressed at the appropriate time in the hearing. However, direct questions to any board member will similarly be addressed at the appropriate time during the hearing. In addition, those questions may be presented in your written submissions. For anyone who is attending this hearing only by telephone as opposed to by video conference, you may dial *9 at any time to be added to the list of speakers. At the appointed time, Mr. Belniak will call out your phone number and alert you that you may begin to share your comments. To become unmuted, you will please dial *6 at that time. All public speakers, whether by video conference or telephone, will be given three minutes to speak. A time clock will appear on the Zoom screen to let you know how much time has elapsed since your comment period started. No one person will be given more than one opportunity to speak at this hearing. Since this hearing is being transcribed by a stenographer, when you're called upon to speak again, please state and spell your full name to ensure the accuracy of today's record. Periodically, the instructions for how to be added to the list of speakers will appear in the chat function of Zoom. The chat function in today's meeting is a one-way communication path. It's being used to give you information, but not to accept any information from attendees. Whether you wish to speak or not, the IDA is providing you with an opportunity to submit written comments to the IDA during the public hearing and within 30 days after it. To do so, please email them, as was stated earlier, to jlyntz, or mail them to Town of Brookhaven Industrial Development Agency, 1 Independence Hill Farmingville, New York, 11738. And finally, as Mr. Braun has already stated, this public hearing is being recorded. Today's first speaker is Mr. John Wagner. Mr. Wagner, would you please introduce yourself, spell your name, and begin your remarks?
Thank you, Judge Cohen. Good afternoon. My name is John M. Wagner, J-O-H-N, M as in Matthew, W-H-E-N-E-R. I am an attorney and a member of Sir Tillman, Ballin, Adler, and Hyman, LLP, the attorneys for Ronk Hub LLC, which is the town-designated master developer of the Ronconcomah Hub Project. My office is at 100 Motor Parkway, Hopock, New York. The Town of Brookhaven Industrial Development Agency, which I'll refer to as the IDA, is holding this hearing with respect to the IDA's proposed condemnation of several parcels for the Ronconcomah Hub Project, which involves comprehensive redevelopment with mixed commercial and residential uses of approximately 54 acres of land within the Town of Brookhaven that include and surround the Ronconcomah Station of the Long Island Railroad. The Ronconcomah Hub Project is generally bounded south by the railroad, west by Garrity Avenue and Hawkins Avenue, north by Union Avenue and Union Street, and east by the Fairfield at Ronconcomah Apartment Complex. As the Board knows, as part of the condemnation process, the IDA pursuant to Section 204 of the State eminent domain procedure law must ultimately prepare a determination and findings as to, among other things, one, the public use, benefit, or purpose to be served by the proposed public project; and two, the general effect of the proposed project on the environment and residents of the locality. I will speak today as to these two issues. First, with respect to the public use, benefit, or purpose to be served by the Ronconcomah Hub Project. Since approximately 2007, Town of Brookhaven has recognized that the Ronconcomah Hub Project area is in a blighted condition and in urgent need of comprehensive economic revitalization and redevelopment. To facilitate such redevelopment, the town has evaluated the hub project area and found that it was blighted and in need of redevelopment, prepared and adopted several comprehensive land use plans, studies, and zoning regulations to remediate the blighted condition of the hub, and also to define and facilitate hub redevelopment. The town has also sought and designated a private master developer for the hub and expressly empowered the IDA to effectuate and implement town urban renewal projects and plans. More specifically, in April of 2008 and March of 2009, the town prepared a two-phase Ronconcomah Hub planning study to revitalize the Ronconcomah Hub area. In August of 2010, the Town Board prepared a Ronconcomah Hub transit-oriented development draft land use and implementation plan. Beginning in 2011, in effort to ensure that the town's planning efforts would result in actual redevelopment of the blighted hub area, the Town Board decided to seek private developer input. In this regard, in January 2011, the town issued a request for expressions of interest, an RFEI, for that purpose. In September of 2011, the town issued a request for qualifications, an RFQ, for a master developer for the Ronconcomah Hub. On February 7 of 2012, the Town Board designated Trek Ronk Hub LLC as the master developer for the Ronconcomah Hub. And in September of 2012, the town executed a master development designation agreement, or MDDA, with Trek Ronk Hub LLC for the Ronconcomah Hub. Under that agreement, Ronk Hub LLC now serves as the master developer. The Town Board, after review of preliminary plans received as part of the RFEI and RFQ processes, prepared a blight study for the Ronconcomah area. That study was dated September of 2012. Now, at this point, I'd ask that Exhibit 7, which is the first page of the blight study, please be put up on the screen. There we are. Thank you. I also note a full copy of this blight study that you're seeing the first page of on I also note a full copy of this blight study that you're seeing the first page of on the screen. And every other exhibit identified at this hearing can be found and reviewed on the IDA's website at BrookhavenIDA.org, as explained by Mr. Angel previously. Once on the IDA website, you can click the News and Events tab and then scroll down and click on the link entitled 51822 Ronconkoma Hub Eminent Domain Public Hearing, Public Hearing Notice. After you click on that link, it will take you to a page with links to each of today's hearing exhibits. Click on any one of the exhibit links to view a full copy of the exhibit. Now, for the record, I respectfully identify the entirety of the September 2012 blight study as Exhibit 7 for this hearing. Now, going back to the chronology, it should be noted that the blight study identified several conditions in the Ronconkoma Hub as evidence of blight in the hub. These conditions included vacant and partially vacant properties and buildings, significant underutilization of development potential, deteriorated buildings, inadequate curb and sidewalk areas, lack of appropriate drainage and sewerage infrastructure, and incompatible land uses, and an unattractive visual environment, which is not conducive to attraction of private investment to the area. The blight study specifically concluded that the Ronconkoma Hub area, based upon field observations and the data collected, is sufficiently blighted to warrant the preparation of an urban renewal plan in accordance with Article 15 of the New York State General Municipal Law. After review of the blight study, Town Board on September 20th, 2012, by Resolution 2012-804, designated the Ronconkoma Hub as appropriate for urban renewal pursuant to Article 15 of the New York State General Municipal Law, and also authorized preparation of an urban renewal plan. Please bring up next exhibit number eight, please. Thank you. Following the blight study and the Town Board's Resolution 2012-804, the Town Board had prepared an urban renewal plan for the Ronconkoma Hub dated October of 2013, the entirety of which I'd like to designate as Exhibit 8 for this hearing. The stated purpose of the urban renewal plan as set forth on Page 1 of the plan was to facilitate the redevelopment of the Ronconkoma Hub area as a transit-oriented development, or TOD. A transit development TOD area featuring a mix of higher-density residential development, commercial, hospitality, institutional, office, and retail uses, conference, entertainment, and exhibition venues, and public-designated outdoor spaces. The urban renewal plan further stated that such TOD development was designed to both complement and benefit from the presence of the Ronconkoma Railroad Station and its associated commuter-passenger volumes. At Page 24, the urban renewal plan identified several methods of implementation of the plan. These implementation methods included rezoning of the entire project area to a TOD district in order to facilitate the recommended redevelopment, and acquisition of property within the project area for redevelopment purposes, including both purchase of individual properties by the master developer, and, most significantly for this hearing, possible use of eminent domain by the town. Please bring up next exhibit number nine. Thank you. In connection with proposed TOD rezoning of the Ronconkoma Hub to implement the urban renewal plan, the town prepared and updated Ronconkoma Hub Transit-Oriented Development, or TOD, Land Use and Implementation Plan that was dated October of 2013. You see the first page of that on the screen. I'd like to designate the entire land use and implementation plan as Exhibit 9 for this hearing. On June 24th, 2014, the Town Board took several actions. Specifically, it adopted the urban renewal plan, adopted the land use and implementation plan, adopted the Ronconkoma Hub TOD zoning district, which encompassed the entire Ronconkoma Hub area, including the parcels that are the subject of this condemnation hearing, and finally, adopted the Ronconkoma Hub TOD zoning regulations. I note at this point that the Ronconkoma Hub TOD zoning regulations can be found in Article 23 of Chapter 85 of the Town of Brookhaven Code. Now, please bring up next exhibit number 10. Thank you. On May 27th, 2021, the Town Board adopted Resolution 2021-368, which you see on the screen, which designated the IDA as an agency that may effectuate and implement urban renewal projects and plans in the town pursuant to the IDA's statutory powers for projects that have an application with the IDA. Like to designate the entirety of Resolution 2021-368 as Exhibit 10 for this hearing. Please bring up the next exhibit, number 11. Thank you. Lastly, on August 2nd of 2021, the IDA entered into a Ronconkoma Hub condemnation/acquisition agreement with Roncub LLC, which requires Roncub LLC to, among other things, bear the costs of condemnation of properties in the Ronconkoma Hub. I'd like to designate the entirety of that condemnation-acquisition agreement as Exhibit 11 for this hearing. Now, moving to the second topic, of which I'm going to speak today, which bears upon the effect of the Ronconkoma Hub project on the environment and the residents of the locality. It should first be noted that the Ronconkoma Hub project, quote-unquote, includes Town Board adoption of a comprehensive land use plan for the Ronconkoma Hub, a proposed Ronconkoma Hub Transit-Oriented Development, or TOD zoning district, to cover the Ronconkoma Hub, comprehensive zoning regulations governing the redevelopment and use of properties within the TOD district, and an urban renewal plan for the Ronconkoma Hub. The Ronconkoma Hub project also encompasses actual redevelopment of the Ronconkoma Hub in accordance with the Hub TOD zoning regulations. The Ronconkoma Hub project has already been subjected to a comprehensive multi-year review pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRE for short, which has comprehensively identified and evaluated the potential environmental impacts of the project, including on residents of the locality. The Comprehensive Environmental Impact Review has been conducted by the Brookhaven Town Board, acting as SECRE lead agency, and also by other agencies that are quote-unquote involved in the project, including the Brookhaven Planning Board and the IDA. To give just a few milestones of this multi-year SECRE review, on May 12th, 2010, the Town Board prepared a Part 1 Environmental Assessment Form, an EAF, to commence SECRE review of the potential environmental impacts of the Ronconkoma Hub project. On August 17th of 2010, the Town Board issued a SECRE positive declaration, which required preparation of a draft generic environmental impact statement, or a DGIS, to evaluate the impacts of the town's proposed adoption of a Ronconkoma Hub Transit-Oriented Development Draft Land Use and Implementation Plan, the town's proposed adoption of a TOD zoning district for the Ronconkoma Hub, the rezoning of the Ronconkoma Hub area into the new TOD zoning district, and last, ultimate redevelopment of hub properties, including those proposed for condemnation by the IDA in accordance with the land use and implementation plan and the TOD zoning district regulations. Now, please bring up the next exhibit, number 12. Thank you. The Town Board prepared a draft generic environmental impact statement, or a DGIS, for the Ronconkoma Hub project dated September 2010. You see the first page of it on the screen. This DGIS, among other things, evaluated a theoretical maximum development scenario for the hub in accordance with the proposed TOD zoning for the hub. I'd like to designate the entirety of this DGIS as Exhibit 12 for this hearing. On September 21st, 2010, the Town Board accepted the DGIS as complete and adequate for public review. On October 19th, 2010, the Town Board held a public hearing on the DGIS. October 29th, 2010, comment period on the DGIS closed. Now, because the densities recommended in the town's 2013 urban renewal plan, which I mentioned earlier, differed from those evaluated in the 2010 DGIS, the Town Board prepared an updated Part 1 Environmental Assessment Form for the Ronconkoma Hub project. Then, on October 1st of 2013, the Town Board issued a SECRE positive declaration, which required preparation of a supplemental DGIS for the project. Now, please bring up Exhibit 13. You. On November 12th, 2013, the Town Board accepted a draft supplemental GEIS, or DSGIS, as complete and adequate for public review. I'd like to designate the entirety of the DSGIS as Exhibit 13 for this hearing. On January 9th, 2014, the Town Board held a public hearing on the DSGIS, the supplemental. On February 10th, 2014, the comment period closed on the DSGIS. Now, please bring up Exhibit 14. Thank you. In April of 2014, the Town Board filed a final generic environmental impact statement, or an FGEIS, for the Ronconkoma Hub project. I'd like to designate the entirety of that FGEIS as Exhibit 14 for this hearing. And again, just in passing, I'll mention that complete copies of all of these documents, which are quite voluminous, are available on the IDA website, as I explained earlier. Now, please bring up Exhibit 15. Thank you. On June 24th, 2014, the Town Board adopted a SECRE finding statement for the Ronconkoma Hub project. Significantly, the Town Board, in its finding statement, specifically certifies, among other things, that it has considered the relevant environmental impacts, facts, and conclusions disclosed in the environmental impact statement for the project, and consistent with social, economic, and other essential considerations from among the reasonable alternatives available, the proposed action is one that avoids or minimizes adverse environmental impacts to the maximum extent practicable, and that adverse environmental impacts will be avoided or minimized to the maximum extent practicable. I'd like to designate the entirety of the Town Board's SECRE finding statement as Exhibit 15 for this hearing. And now, please bring up the next and last exhibit, which is number 16. On November 18th, 2015, the IDA, acting as a SECRE involved agency, after review of relevant materials and the Town Board's SECRE finding statement, adopted the Town Board's SECRE finding statement as its own after finding that the Town Board's finding statement accurately and adequately examined the environmental issues presented by the proposed action. I'd like to designate the entirety of the IDA's finding statement resolution as Exhibit 16 for this hearing. So, the foregoing recap demonstrates that the environmental effects of the Ronconkoma Ronconkoma Hub have been thoroughly studied in coordination with multiple involved agencies during a comprehensive SECRE review process extending over several years. I respectfully request that the analyses and conclusions of this completed SECRE process be incorporated in the record of this hearing, and that the IDA consider such comprehensive analyses and conclusions in its determination and findings for this proceeding.
Yeah, Dean, part of the record.
Thank you. In conclusion, it's evident that the Town Board, in preparing and adopting the blight study, the urban renewal plan, the land use and implementation plan, the TOD zoning code, and associated documents, recognized the public need for revitalization of the Ronconkoma Hub area. Moreover, through its multi-year environmental review, the Town Board comprehensively identified and evaluated the potential environmental and community impacts of the Ronconkoma Hub redevelopment. Accordingly, I respectfully submit that pursuant to Section 204 of the State Eminent Domain Procedure Law, the proposed condemnations at issue for this hearing, which are properties within the Ronconkoma Hub, will further the public use, benefit, and purpose to be served by the Ronconkoma Hub project, and furthermore, will not result in adverse impacts on the environment or residents of the affected locality. This concludes my presentation today. I respectfully request that all of Exhibits 7 through 16, which I have referred to in my presentation, be made part of the official record of today's hearing.
They are part of the record and deemed so.
Thank you, Judge. As I explained earlier, these exhibits are available for viewing by the Town Board and the public on the IDA's website. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker will be Mr. Jim Coughlin.
Thank you, Judge Cohen. For the record, my name is James L. Coughlin, J.A.M.E.S.L. Coughlin, C.O.U.G.H.L.A.N. I want to thank the members of the Board of the IDA for holding this important meeting. My role here is to give some historical perspective and some of the overall economic impacts. By way of background, I'm a principal of Tri-Tech Real Estate Company. An affiliate of Tri-Tech is the managing member of Roncub LLC, which is the master developer designated by the Town of Brookhaven. My brother Bob and I started Tri-Tech in 1986, and we've been developing on Long Island, and particularly Suffolk County, for over thirty-five years. We've been fortunate enough to be involved in several transformative projects, including New Village of Patchog, the shipyard of Port Jefferson, the Well in Lindenhurst, and in addition to the Roncub, right now, we're currently constructing a transformative project in downtown Bay Shore. However, the Ronco, the Ronconkoma Hub is certainly the most transformative project that we've been involved in. If you notice, all the other projects that I mentioned are in existing walkable downtown communities that were in need of some kind of rejuvenation and revitalization. The Ronconkoma doesn't have that downtown. It doesn't have that sense of place that the villages have. And it is due to the history of the development of central Suffolk County, really. Back in the middle of the last century, the center of the island was very sparsely populated, and the majority of our population was along the shorelines, and that's where our villages were developed. But as the LI came through in 1960s, and the population sprawled out from Brooklyn and Queens, there was a lot of density created in the middle of the island. But the people that took those homes were generally people from Brooklyn and Queens who did not want to live near apartments, did not want density, and didn't want, did not want to live near a train station. So, during those, there were no new villages or downtown cores created up and down the spine of the island in central Suffolk as that sprawl came through. And the decision of where to put uses that people didn't want to live near included, why don't we move them near the train station? So, you know, lawn chemical companies and truck repair shops and printing presses and bus depots were all considered uses that should probably be near the train station. But that same density that came out to the middle of the island started to really use that train station regularly. A lot of them commuted A lot of them commuted on it every day and invited their friends and relatives out from the city to come visit through the train station. The train station became really kind of the front door for the community by the late 80s. And the community was saying, we don't like our front door. Our front door is blighted. It is often unsafe. It's dirty, certainly not welcoming, and not something that we, as a community, are proud of. And so they pressured the town to start looking at what can be done with this area to make our front door more inviting and more welcoming and something that we can be proud of. And the town responded to that via all the studies that John Wagner just pointed out and all the effort that the town put in to try to determine if something should be done, and if so, what should be done in the area. And obviously, the results of those studies said that what should happen there is that a new mixed-use transit-oriented development should be developed around the station. And ultimately, they went through the process of engaging a master developer. That process included, you know, forming an 18-person committee with representatives of the town of Brookhaven, the town of Islip, Suffolk County, the town of Brookhaven IDA, town of Islip IDA, Suffolk County IDA, local civics, local chambers. They were all represented on the committee that went out to RFEI, as was mentioned before, and then ultimately out to RFQ. And I think it's important to note that it wasn't RFQ and not an RFP. They were looking for the qualifications of a developer to come in here to implement the town's vision for redevelopment of this area. They were not looking for a developer to propose, as an RFP would indicate. They weren't looking for a proposal from a developer to say what should happen here. They were looking for somebody with the qualifications to carry out their vision. That committee unanimously selected Tri-Tech, and we signed our master development agreement in 2012, master development designation agreement. But paramount to us in that agreement was the town's agreement to use eminent domain if needed to assure that the entire project could be completed because we, as master developer, needed to go figure out how to attract capital here to build an awful lot of upfront public infrastructure, including a new regional sewer facility, new roads, utilities, you know, totally over $50 million of public infrastructure, and find that the resources for that prior to ever getting started with any of the phases of actual development of Ronkonkoma Hub. And there's no way that we could attract that money or any developer could attract that money if the investors and the lenders didn't know that the entire project could be completed. And you can't know that if you can't know that you can acquire the property. So that was a critical component of the agreement from the master developer perspective. And we have lived up to that. We have, you know, we've built that regional sewer facility. It can handle a million and a half gallons of sanitary waste a day. When we finish the Ronkonkoma Hub project at full completion, it will only use 400,000 gallons a day. That leaves 1.1 million gallons available for the central Suffolk area to allow for economic development, but also to take some of the existing waste that's going into our water supply and remove it from the water supply. For example, the Long Island MacArthur Airport is on Septic, which surprised me when we first looked at this overall project. But that now has the capacity to tap into our sewer pump station and treatment facility. So, and as well as all the industrial that surrounds it, as well as potentially downtown Holbrook. So, it's a resource that's now available for the entire region. We've also attracted the capital to build the first phase of Ronkonkoma Hub. So, the first phase is known as the Alston. We bought at that site four empty environmentally tainted industrial buildings, and we replaced them with six new residential buildings, totaling 489 units. It's over 99% leased right now, and it's been a tremendous success on any measure. It also, I think, is a really good example of what the transformation can be if you just look at the before and after pictures. But there's no way that we would have been able to get investors and lenders to put up over $170 million to build that first phase if they didn't know that the rest of the project could be completed as well and that the downtown could be realized in the village green and village green surrounded by attractive uses in a place that people want to be and congregate. And so, again, there's no way that money would have been coming here without the knowledge that the project could be fully completed. We've also closed on the financing and are well under construction on Phase 2A, which is the village green, including a marketway connection right over to the train station and a connection into the MTA garage, as well as two new structured parking facilities. And the village green is surrounded by 73,000 square feet of retail. There'll be 388 new homes on the site, and there'll be 16,000 square feet of office. And, you know, Tri-Tech believes so much in this new environment that we're creating that we're going to move our corporate headquarters into that office space. But again, that's a $256 million capital structure right now. And it literally overlooks the subject parcels of this hearing. So, directly across Hawkins Avenue, on what the master plan calls for to be a beautiful bookend to the village green is a bus depot and along around it, you know, some of the most blighted properties in the Ronkonkoma Hub project area. So, there's no way that we would have gotten, you know, the 256 million to build Phase 2A if they didn't know that Phase 2B could also be completed, and the subject parcels here are part of Phase 2B. So, in total, Tri-Tech has brought, you know, over $435 million already to the Ronkonkoma Hub project. When we're finished, the overall investment will be in excess of $750 million, certainly. We'll be creating over 10,000 jobs, both temporary and permanent. And in our history, in the other projects that we've worked on, when you revitalize a blighted area, the homes that used to be able to walk to that blighted area and are now able to walk to a beautiful mixed-use transit-oriented area with public spaces and entertainment and food offerings, the values of those homes in the immediate area will certainly rise disproportionate to the rest of the island. So, you know, we're very excited about this project and what it can do for the entire region. To date, we've acquired 15 parcels in the overall Ronkonkoma Hub project. All of them have been through private negotiation. We have paid above appraised value. We have amended the price or the conditions or the timing on each of those acquisitions to meet the seller's needs. And we intend to continue private negotiations for parcels for every future phase, including the parcels that are subject of this hearing. However, it is critical that the board helps keep this process moving forward so that our investors, lenders, future tenants, and employers will know that this community transformation will actually be completed. The project to date has enjoyed, you know, support from every layer of government. The state has committed $50 million for parking infrastructure. It already begun funding some of that. The county worked with Tri-Tech on facilitating the regional sewer facility. The town has led the way on the rezoning, the secret review, the site planning, and the building permits, and all of the civic associations and chambers of commerce, as well as regional business and labor organizations, have all been extremely supportive. You know, it's an amazing public-private partnership. We're proud to be part of it. It's truly been driven by the community and is being implemented by a master developer. And again, we appreciate the IDA board holding this important hearing, and we ask you to keep this transformation moving forward. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you very much.
Judge Cohen, it is 1:59. Let me suggest that we take a 10-minute recess before we hear from the public. We'll reconvene at 2:09.
Excellent, Mr. Braun. And we will now recess for 10 minutes, and then after the 10 minutes at 2:09, begin to take public comment. All right, our 10-minute.
I believe it is 2:09, so I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you very much. Our 10-minute recess has elapsed, and we are now ready to begin the public comment portion of our hearing. Again, Mr. Belniak will announce the speaker.
He is back.
And we will then proceed after I have the speaker provide name, address, and interest. And please speak slowly to spell your name and address, Mr. Belniak. Provide name, address, and interest, and please speak slowly to spell your name and address. Mr. Belniak.
Thank you, Judge. Good afternoon. My name is Alan Belniak. I'd like to quickly review. I'm sorry. My name is Alan Belniak. A L A N B E L N I A K. I'm the technical advisor serving to help facilitate this meeting. I'd like to go over a few administrative items before we begin taking comments. If you wish to speak, as mentioned earlier, look for the raise hand button in the bottom tray of zoom controls. If you're dialing in by the telephone, please press star nine to raise your hand. As stated previously, please state your name slowly and clearly. If you're interested, there is an AI based closed captioning slash live transcript for the meeting in play. Click on the live transcript button down below if you wish to use that. You will have one opportunity to speak for three minutes, as the judge has previously stated. And as one final reminder, this session is being recorded. Here periodically throughout this, I will re-share some of these details to make sure everyone is aware on how to provide comment. So with that, I'd like to welcome the first person with their hand raised to unmute themselves and share their comments. That person's name is Tim. Tim, you should now have the option to unmute your mic and when you do, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Yes, and may I ask, Tim, if you again give us your full name, your address, and your interest. Tim, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Tim McCarthy. T I M. M C C A R T H Y. I reside at 343 Rockaway Street in Islip Terrace. Do you need me to spell those out?
I think we have it. Mr. Lachlan, are we good?
We're good, Judge.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So as I said, my name is Tim McCarthy. I'm currently serving as business representative for IBW Local 25. Nassau and Suffolk's finest electricians. First, I'd like to say that we at Local 25 fully support the Rockonkama Hub. With hundreds of construction jobs and hundreds of thousands of man hours, this project will provide great economic growth for the region. And good paying jobs for our construction members. The Rockonkama Hub was envisioned as a part of the master plan, a plan that was years in the making. All levels of government civic associations and all other parties of interest have voiced strong support for this vision. As always, Tri-Tech works with and will continue to work with all parties involved, always supportive of the community. I'm sure Tri-Tech would see this to the most satisfactory end. Being a regionally transformative project, there are a number of boxes that are checked here. It helps mitigate a very high demand for TOD housing. It will expand the tax base, creates construction jobs and many employment opportunities at the completion of the project. It will provide great economic revitalization to the area and make and make the finished project a destination people enjoy going to. I'd like to conclude by saying that Tri-Tech has proven with every project they do time and time again. They do the right thing and leave a positive footprint for the community. However, all the pieces are absolutely needed to see this master plan to its imagined vision. For all these reasons, I've stated here, I strongly support this project and all processes to see it through. Thanks for taking the time to hear me today. And have a wonderful day.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCarthy. Our next speaker, Mr. Belniak.
Excuse me, real quickly, Lenore Paprocki has to leave for one moment.
I will wait.
I will use the opportunity to let the next person know who is there they're going to speak, but will not unmute their microphone until we have the return, the return person. So the next person to speak will be P Sorrentino. And then on deck is Greg Mensch. So next piece Sorrentino on deck, Greg Mensch.
Thank you very much, Mr. Belniak, but we will wait.
I completely apologize.
There is no problem with that, and the record should reflect. Ms. Paprocki is now back in attendance. All right. So, Mr. P Sorrentino, if you would please unmute your microphone, please provide us with your name, address, and interest in this matter. And of course, speak slowly and spell out your name and address.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Phil Sorrentino. P H I L S O R R E N T I N O. I live at 1240 St. Brook Road in Lake Grove. And I've had the pleasure and the opportunity to show my support in prior town hall meetings. And I can assure you, if you have 20 more, I'll be at all 20 showing my support for these projects. Everybody's been talking about infrastructure and development and housing, and I'm all aboard and support that. But my main concern is safety and safety for my family. And I can assure you, all of my neighbors are worried about their safety for their family and going to and Rockonkama is our station. That's our station. Whenever we take the rail, if we go into the city or wherever, that's the station we use. And I've said it before, and I'll say it again, we don't feel safe there. And it's a good reason why we don't feel safe there. And my neighbors feel the same way. And to stop this project, they've done a beautiful job in phase one. It looks gorgeous. But to stop this project would be a travesty. We want it completed. We want that area cleaned up and we want that area safe for ourselves and for our children. And we employ you, get that project done. And that's all I have to say. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sorrentino. Mr. Belniak, our next speaker is Mr. Greg Mensch. Mr. Mensch, would you please unmute your microphone? Spell your name, your address, please.
My name is Greg Mensch. G R E G O R Y John Mensch. M E N S C H 14C Hawkins Avenue, Rockonkama, New York.
Mr. Mensch, please proceed.
Good afternoon. I am Greg Mensch, owner of 14C Hawkins Avenue, Rockonkama. As you all well know, that I have several other pieces in the property of the Rockonkama Hub. I purchased these properties years ago from my mother and my father to establish my school bus and motor coach business with my family. For many years, we have provided transportation throughout Long Island. My unique and premium piece of property is very important to our operation. It allows us to the ability to provide service for dozens of school districts, colleges, universities, MacArthur Airport, fire departments, mass transit, commuter bus, commuter bus service to New York City, various organizations and private residents. We also respond to the situations for the closures of flights coming into MacArthur Airport into the railroad. I have had to operate for years now, knowing the knowledge that the town of Brookhaven intends to take my property by eminent domain. Tri-Tech, the developer for this project, has yet, has not yet offered me a fair payment. I have spent countless hours reaching out to everyone possible to express my concern. We want to be part of this area because of the location and of the railroad and the airport. We need to be heard. I have a, I have also tried to work for Tri-Tech. I have also tried to work with Tri-Tech for this years. From the first time I met them in a diner to a handful of times, for a handful of times we've met or spoke on the phone. But they have not changed their position on a below value price that is even lower than the other pieces that they have bought with the other, the other owner property, property owners. I have all, I have only received a few official offers that they honestly extremely insulting, insulting me. Tri-Tech does not want to pay me the value of the property it's worth, considering all that they are trying to take it from me. I am being forced to leave my property without a fair payment. I could lose my business and everything I have worked for. Today's real estate market is at its all time high, and there's a lot of land available. There is not a lot of land available for my type of business. We all need to, we also need to rebuild and the costs are increasing every day. Relocating means an additional expense. And if we can find the property that suits our needs, no one, remember, no one wants a bus garage in their backyard. I'm trying to rebuild like every other small business because of the virus. I do not have the ability to pay out the pockets for these additional expenses without fair compensation for all these factors. I would not only be forced off my property, but I could lose my business. We are in the business of making deals. We do it all the time. We understand the need and we understand the want. I cannot negotiate with myself. I need a willing and able partner in the negotiation process.
Mr. Mensch, Mr. Mensch, I see your time is up, but I will exercise my discretion and allow you more time to wrap up your remarks. Please proceed.
Your honor, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Your Honor. I'll start off with this. We are in the business of making deals. We do not, we do it all the time. We understand the need and we understand the want. I cannot negotiate with myself. I need a willing and able partner to do the negotiation. Tri-Tech has so far frustrated us as they have not come to the table in any fair way. I even tried to negotiate a deal with Tri-Tech would provide replacement property for us. They showed us several pieces that were not suitable for our business, or they later said it was too expensive. We tried to work with them and showed them just as many pieces of land that we have and we picked out for. Only the obstacles they put up in every turn during the entire process. We have never offered, we have never got a fair value market price for our property. Our goal is to get a deal done, one that allows us to build our bus terminal and for the, for the hub to move forward. No matter what happens, we will sustain this. This is our family owned land and we are not giving it up. We continue to fight the fight until we are fairly compensated. I'd like to thank the IDA board, and I'd also like to thank you, Judge. Thank you very much for this attention and the time you gave me.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gregory Mensch. Our next speaker, Mr. Belniak.
The next speaker is Mark Mensch. Just a quick reminder, for anyone who wishes to speak, please use the raise hand button down below, as several other folks have. And just a reminder, this meeting is being recorded. So Mark Mensch, you should now have the ability.
Yes, Mr. Mark Mensch, if you would please unmute your microphone and please state your name, your address, and your interest in this matter.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Mark Mensch. M E N S C H, the brother of Greg Mensch, the owner who previously spoke. My address is 24 Scrub Oak Road in Quogue, New York. As previously highlighted by Greg, our office is centrally located in an ideal location for our business. We could easily service all of Long Island from the Long Island Expressway and support the Long Island Railroad and MacArthur Airport for emergency closures. For 50 years, we have been strong supporters of local government, school districts, colleges, universities, and the Special Olympics. For the past 10 years, we have been operating under the threat of eminent domain. This has handcuffed our ability to improve the facilities that we have and certainly address many of the blighted issues that were put into this report that was submitted to the town. This is not a chance for us to cash out and retire. We are now, we now have our third generation of Menches working in the family business. We need to continue this business in order to be able to support their livelihood here on Long Island. Our company assists also needs to continue to operate into the future for more than 100 employees and their families who also reside not only in Brookhaven Town, but throughout Suffolk County. The pandemic has put our business on pause and yet we survived, but we cannot survive eminent domain. I respectfully ask the IDA to stop eminent domain and to force Tri-Tech back to the table so we can work out a deal. We support the Rockonkama Hub, just like previous speakers have voiced their support for the project. However, we need to have a fair process and eminent domain cannot be part of that process. Thank you very much, Judge.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mensch. I will now move to our next speaker, Mr. Belniak.
Next speaker with their hand raised is Brian Mensch. Brian, you should now have the ability to open up your line.
Hello, my name is Brian Mensch.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mensch.
R I A N M E N S C H. I reside at 36 Big Crest Avenue, West Hampton. And I am the son of the owner of the property 14C Hawkins Avenue, Rockonkama.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brian Mensch. Please provide us your comments.
Here at Norfolk Express, we are a family owned company that creates careers, develops a sense of community, supplies well deserved benefits, and has had a positive reputation that should not be pushed out of its location. We are in the process of rebuilding and this added major hardship will only serve to make things more difficult for our business. We are asking for a fair negotiation. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brian Mensch. Mr. Belniak, our next speaker, please.
Our next speaker has only one name mentioned, and that person's name is Mohammed. So Mohammed, you should now have the ability to open up your line.
Yes, and Mr. Mohammed, please give us your full name and your address and spell both. Thank you.
Mohammed Basqoye. M O H A M A D. Last name is Basqoye. B A S H Q O Y. 1177 Riverside Avenue, Mesa Peak, New York.
Please give us your comments.
All right, I've been, I just want to mention a few things. I don't want to take much of your time, Your Honor. It's just, I noticed that town of Brookhaven is, is a home of so many hardworking individuals. Even I don't live in Brookhaven, town of Brookhaven, but I've been working there more than 22 years. And in the past 10 years, I've been living in fear of losing my job if they're going to close the business. It's such a good family oriented, oriented business. And just, I have just one thing to say. Why don't we include the Norfolk Express since it's next to the railroad station? And we do business with the railroad almost daily. We help the railroad with, with this, with this project. The only one is benefiting out of this is like the first speaker, the one who's making good money out of the building, the, 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 the union. And the Tri-Tech is the one who's making money. If it's really for the, for the people, you guys should include Norfolk Express as a bus depot within the, the, the thing. One last thing I want to say, I came 45 years ago to this country from a third world country. I never heard this in the third world country or in here that we, we doing eminent domain for a private investor. I never heard this in my life. Thank you very much and have a good day, Your Honors.
Thank you very much, Mr. Basqoye. Mr. Belniak, our next speaker, please.
Okay, our next speaker is Artie Sipoletti. Hopefully I said that correct. Artie, you should now have the option to unmute your mic.
Mr. Sipoletti, please give us your name, address, and interest in this matter.
Thank you. Artie Sipoletti, 970 Montauk Highway, Islip. I'm a local contractor, vice president of Da Vinci Construction with over 100 employees that live between Islip. that live between Islip and Brookhaven Townships. We've worked with Tri-Tech for over a decade. We were involved in phase one of the construction and know Tri-Tech as being a building community driven projects. The hub project is regionally transformative. It's a showcase for Long Island. It, it really is displaying what Long Island could be. And if you look at what's on phase one right now, you'll see the example. It stands for itself. This project can't be compared to any other projects on Long Island. There's nothing else like it. When they refer to transit oriented development, this thing has it all. It has the railroad, it has the air and it has Long Island Expressway in close proximity. So I've built many projects on Long Island close to railroad stations, but never have I built one or been involved in anything that had all of these checkmarks. This project is a showcase project. It moves Long Island into the future and it keeps us as a viable destination, which is what I think we all strive for. And as far as Tri-Tech goes as a builder developer, I know them as the best on Long Island. And they're the most fair people to the trades as well as to everybody I've seen them involved with. I strongly support this project and I encourage you to fulfill the original intent and let this project continue. Thank you, Judge, for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sipoletti. Mr. Belniak, please, our next speaker.
The next speaker I see with their hand raised is Richard Brooks. Richard, I'm now sending a command to you to unmute your mic.
Good afternoon. Please provide us with your name and address, spell it out and provide your interest also in this matter.
Thank you, your honor. Uh, my name is Richard Brooks, R I C H A R D, B R O O K S. I reside at nineteen Franco Lane, Sotok, New York, one one seven three three.
Please proceed.
I'm business manager of Plumbers Local Two Hundred located at twenty one twenty three Fifth Avenue, Ronconkuma. I represent eleven hundred members in Nassau and Suffolk County. Plumbers Local Two Hundred is in support of this Ronconkuma Hub project. Ronconkuma Hub is a community driven project that will serve not only as an asset for Ronconkuma, but a regional transformative project for all Long Island to be proud of. Tri-Tech works with and supports the community. This project will be creating jobs, housing and investment on Long Island that Long Island companies and resides benefits from. Trans oriented projects like this are what we keep Long Island a viable destination for people and business well into the future. Thank you for your support on this project.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brooks. Mr. Belniak, please advise us to the next speaker.
Gladly, Judge. The next speaker is Joe Yu. Joe, uh, let's see. So pardon me for one moment. Joe has a different version of Zoom. So Joe is going to temporarily come across as a panelist. Uh, Joe, we ask you to use your microphone only. And then you, like others, will have three minutes. So give me one moment. Your screen will flicker and again, microphone only, please. Joe, please let us know when, when, when your microphone is unmuted.
It is unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Mr. Joe Yu, if you would please tell us your full name and address, please spell it out. And you, uh, don't need the video, just the audio since you're actually on telephone.
Yes, uh, my name is Joseph Urban, as stated, J O S E P H. U R B A N and I live in the area of the Ronconkuma Hub project, okay? Um, uh, Tri-Tech and they are saying they are going to use eminent domain to take our property. It's the years now they told us dominant, eminent domain would not be used. Okay, I went to numerous meetings and every meeting, one after the other, they stated eminent domain would not be used. Okay, I'm a seventy eight year old man and have been in my home for nearly on fifty years. And how do you wanna take my home and, uh, and where do I go? Where do I go? I have a third of an acre of property which is nicely landscaped because I like to, uh, work outside planting flowers. Uh, I'm proud of how nice my property looks. It's also, uh, a great location as I can walk to the railroad station. I'm five, five minutes from Long Island Railroad. You know, do you own a home and do you be aware of the fact that they can just take your home from you? Okay? Uh, laws need to be changed, okay? Uh, remind me, uh, happened to need, uh, speak of the herd. People need to be, to be heard here because this can happen to anyone. Uh, a blight, they're referring to the blight. The blight created here in this area was created by, by Tri-Tech themselves, okay? Uh, Jim Coglin just spoke recently, okay, and talked about the blight. Well, property town to be first that be blighted were properties that Tri-Tech purchased along Hawkins Avenue and let go into disrepair, okay? Now, a prime example of what I'm referring to in the area too is, um, a house on Carroll Avenue, uh, which was the newest house in the neighborhood, was purchased by Tri-Tech. A number of years ago, they bought it up, created blight. We had the cops here every single day because druggies and homeless people were breaking into this house, okay? Now, as far as people being negotiated with, I have never heard from Tri-Tech or the town regarding anything about my property, okay? Uh, again, where do I go, okay, from here? A seven, eight year old man who's been here for all, going off fifty years now. Okay, nobody has contacted me and this is where we stand today. I'd like some answers because I haven't gotten one. And like I said, I haven't heard from either the town of Brookhaven or from Tri-Tech. So, you know, how are they saying they're trying to work with the people? That is not true. That is not at all true. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. Our next speaker, please, Mr. Belniak.
Stay there with me for one moment while I take care of. Okay, I think got that figured out. Give me one moment. Okay, Mr. Urban is now back as an attendee. The next speaker with their hand raised is Megan M. Megan, you should now have a command to unmute your microphone.
Ms. Megan, yes, please provide your full name and address and please spell it for us and state your interest in this matter.
Um, Megan Mensch, M E G A N, Mensch, M E N S C H. I reside at thirty six Big Crest Avenue, West Hampton, New York, and I'm just speaking on behalf of North Fork Express.
Please proceed.
I just wanna thank everyone for their time. Uh, as previously mentioned, I'm Greg's, Greg Mensch's daughter, um, the owner of North Fork Express. And I just wanna reiterate what has been said before me. The priority at hand here is the Ronconkuma community that, including those that work at North Fork Express. I mean, as quoted in Newsday in twenty fourteen, the town and Tri-Tech had no intentions of using eminent domain and there's still no place for it. All the properties being discussed here should be fairly compensated as they're the backbone of the Ronconkuma community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mensch. Uh, Mr. Belniak, please advise us to the next speaker.
Happily, Judge, the next speaker is, actually just before I announce that, one more reminder to folks. Please use the raise hand feature. Uh, we do not, no longer have any call in listener, call in listeners. That would be star nine, but raise hand if you'd like to speak and you'll have three minutes, just as the previous speakers have. And our next speaker, uh, Rick Amarati. So Rick, if I said that right, please unmute your, your microphone.
Yes, thank you. Uh, good afternoon, your honor.
Rick Amarati, good afternoon. Uh, please give us your full name, your address and spell it for us and tell us your interest in this matter.
Good afternoon, your honor, members of the board. Rick Amarati, R I C K, A M M I R A T I. President of the Holbrook Chamber of Commerce, I'm calling on behalf of the chamber. The addresses of our office is one thousand Main Street, Holbrook, New York, one one seven four one is the zip.
Thank you very much. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Uh, I am calling, uh, on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. We are not going to comment, uh, specifically on any land use issues. I will defer to my sister chamber, the Ronconkuma Chamber, as well as the Ronconkuma Civic and defer to their comments. Uh, but our project does exist one and a half a mile from the, uh, the site that we're talking about. We're off of Union Avenue. That being said, I do see the dichotomy here. We have a family business that's, you know, trying to get a fair market value. I really do hope that that can be resolved through Tri-Tech. I am speaking out on behalf of Tri-Tech though, as, uh, they've been good partners in the community. I've had several meetings with them, spoke to them. We are gonna be sitting down with them to talk about a project that we're gonna be doing on Main Street, uh, in Holbrook. I was initially involved, um, or invited to meet with them when they created a new village about fifteen years ago. So I've had a long ongoing relationship with the, with the Coghlan Brothers and Chris Kelly who works for them, uh, for many years. And I'd like to say that, uh, the work that they're doing down there is beautiful. I love the project. Um, and, uh, you know, I would like to see this advance. With that being said, in terms of the, the issue and negotiation, um, I did know Tommy Newman who owned World's Gym right on the corner there of Hawkins and Railroad. And I know that they were able to come to a successful agreement a few years ago. I know Tommy was able to move on and expand and do other things with his business and the end game was very happy. And I surely hope that the same kind of resolution can be resolved with Tri-Tech and the Mensch family. Cause I have not met the Mensch family, but I certainly have heard their comments as well. I'm pro business on behalf of the chamber, but I'm also, of course, uh, you know, pro development. And this is what we need. The trans oriented development, the builders are right. We need this in our downtown. Ronconkuma, great town, great history, but you know, we need some fixing up regardless of what the cause was. We still have an issue there. I do pass that property every day. There's another big project to the south that we're not gonna talk about that's also being proposed. So a lot is happening in that area. And certainly I'd like to see Tri-Tech be able to make this come to fruition and hopefully this ends in a happy way for everybody. But I am speaking out on behalf of the Coghlins. They've demonstrated tremendous integrity, uh, on behalf of their meetings with myself and the chamber. And, uh, again, hopefully a deal like the one that happened with World's Gym can be made also for the Mensch family. And I wish everybody success in this and appreciate the opportunity to speak on this topic. So with that, I am complete. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Amarati. Mr. Belniak, please, our next speaker. I see it's a Galaxy phone, so we're gonna need a name and an address.
Yes, thank you for that. Galaxy S ten E. Um, so when you could, please unmute yourself and then just as a judge had politely requested, share with us your name.
Yes, hello.
Please tell us your name and your address and your interest.
Thank you, Judge. Uh, my name is Deborah L. Davy. That's D E B O R A H. L D V D A V for Victory E Y. I live and reside in the town of Brookhaven. My address is two ten Eleventh Avenue, Holtsville. I'm also a business owner in the town of Brookhaven as well. And I would like to express my strong support for the Ronconkuma Hub project. Tri-Tech is a very reputable builder. They have done amazing projects and transformed uh, Long Island in many different areas, um, blighted areas to beautiful areas. Uh, if you take the Patchogue project, um, is what stands for my forefront in my mind. Patchogue was a town where I used to take, um, a friend to lunch who used to tell me it was the ugliest town she's ever seen. It was the most embarrassing thing to think that in my community it looked as it did. And now I can go there and take friends and family and it's a beautiful place to, um, to go and have, uh, a good time with friends and family. Restaurants are great. All places beautiful. And that's what I think that the Ronconkuma Hub project will look like when they're completed with it. Um, they have done an amazing job in all the, all the areas of, of work that they've developed. Um, this is a community driven project and, uh, Tri-Tech does work well with and support the community. And I trust that they will do the right thing, that they have the greatest reputation and they're a company of great integrity. Um, and I would support all of their projects. Um, I feel that they are more than qualified to do this project. And I know that they would make sure that this project would be complete to the liking of the community. So with that said, I'd like, oh, and I wanna also say that I do personally utilize the Ronconkuma train station to go to and from Manhattan. And I can tell you that it has actually been frightening to come home late at night on that train station and by myself to my car in the condition that the train station currently had been in. So it would be, um, a, an amazing transformation um, to, to go from a blighted situation to a, um, a beautiful, um, area. And I look forward to that. And with that said, I do hope that the board will support and approve the moving forward of this project and the continuation of the project. And I don't think that anybody will be disappointed. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Davy. Uh, Mr. Belniak, are there any other speakers, uh, who have raised their hand who wish to speak and provide public comment here? I don't see any myself, but perhaps I'm mistaken.
Judge, a hand just went up as you said that, but you were correct. Prior to saying that, there were no hands raised here. Your eyes are working. Uh, Susan Edwards, uh, you should now have a command to open up your line.
Okay, can you, everybody hear me?
Yes, good afternoon, Ms. Edwards.
Good afternoon, your honor.
Please provide your name and your address and spell it and tell us your interest in this matter.
My name is Susan Edwards, S U S A N E D W A R D S. I live at thirty nine Opal Street in Holbrook, New York. So I am not very far from the Ronconkuma train station. Um, I am.
Please provide your comments. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I am in full support of revitalization of the area. I think everybody here is in agreement that something needs to be done. However, I do one hundred percent support that North Fork Express and the Mensch family be granted a full and fair market value for their property or, or a trade in value. Um, I have personally known them almost all of my life as our families. My, uh, aunts and uncles went to school with Mr. Menches, Greg Menches and Mark Menches dad. So we go back very deeply. I can speak on behalf of the Mensch family. They are a one hundred percent family oriented business. Um, I know for a fact that they have supported employees that have passed without life insurance and they have taken care of them. So to me, that speaks volumes. They take care of their own. For them to possibly lose everything that they've worked so hard for even prior to COVID and not be able to pass that down to their children would be a really bad hardship um, all around. And they also, you know, you think about it, bus drivers, they stop here and there at seven elevens or delis for snacks and, and even like on their bus trips, they provide stuff for the people that are on the bus. So it, it just doesn't affect the bus company. It fingers out throughout the communities all over the place. The bus runs that they do for the colleges, um, that would be affected as well. And that's a big, how many parents wanna run up to, at the New York to get their kids? Um, it's so much nicer to say, okay, just jump on the bus and I'll pick you up in Ronconkuma. Um, but I, I truly believe that they will work very well with, with Tri-Tech in finding the right property and having fair market value for their property. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Edwards. Um, I, I see another hand, Mr. Belniak, please.
Correct. And that hand is Keith McNamara. Keith, you should now have the ability to open up your mic.
Good afternoon, Mr. McNamara. Please spell, uh, state your name and address and please spell it for us and your interest in this matter.
Yes, thank you, Judge. My name is Keith McNamara, K E I T H, M C, capital N, A M, A R A. I live at twelve Target Lane in Center East, New York. Um, I wanna express my, um, approval for this project and, you know, knowing the Tri-Tech company and, uh, projects they've built and, and knowing Jim personally and, and much of his family. Um, I'm pretty confident that they will be able to come to an agreement with the folks at Norfolk Bus. You know, so I mean, I do, uh, understand their comments and their, um, concerns. And I'm, like I said, I'm confident that they will. Uh, my, I grew up in Ronconkuma or at Southport Street where my parents still live. Um, I've seen renderings of the Ronconkuma Hub and shared them with my, you know, seventy plus year old retired parents. We're living in a house with an acre of property that, you know, pretty much needs full service from paid vendors and whatnot. And, uh, they're excited to, to see that renovation of that blighted area, like many people say. So, um, I think So, um, I think that it's gonna reinvigorate that town. Um, the, you know, last stop Ronconcomah, many of us who, who grew up and take the train to the city and have quite frankly been woken up by that sound from the conductors. Um, it is a scary place to get out at twelve, one o'clock in the morning. Um, and I have two daughters of myself and my wife, and we travel to the city quite often. Quite frankly, going next Tuesday, Thursday, rather to see a play with my wife. Uh, so I think the safety, you know, someone mentioned is very important, and, uh, revitalizing this is gonna be important to the community, and I fully support the project. Thank you for your time, Judge. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. McNamara. I don't see any other hands raised. Mr. Belniak, is that true? I'm looking at the list.
That, that is true. I just wanna call out one thing. There are two new dial-in participants that we did not have previously. I just wanna give them the opportunity. Star nine raises your hand. So if any of our two dial-in participants wishes to comment, star nine is now your opportunity. Uh, while I stall for another ten seconds, Judge, you are correct. There are no other raised hands. Um, and so I think, as I stalled enough, I think with that, um, there are no other indications of anyone here in the audience who wishes to comment.
Let me make sure, uh, are there any other people who are in the audience who have not yet spoken who wish to comment during the public comment period of this hearing? I see a hand that's been raised, and it's a person named Jordan. Yes, Mr. Belniak, yes?
Yes, Jordan, you should now have the opportunity to unmute your mic. There you go.
Yes, and respectfully, uh, Jordan, can you please tell us your full name and your address and your interest in this matter? And of course, spell your name and address for us.
My name is, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, okay. My name is Simon Jordan, and I am an employee at Norfolk Express for the past seventeen years. I just wanted to say, uh, one quick comment. I'm currently sitting in my office, and from my window, I can see the amazing construction of Phase Two of this project. I can see the hundreds of men and women busy at work, and I can say that I'm truly happy for them and for the unions and employees out there working hard on this project, as they are working hard to support themselves and their families. Over the past several months and years, I've been concerned, have become concerned for myself and my fellow employees, as I know that Norfolk might not be part of this project and will be forced to leave. I just have one comment, and that is, um, I've heard a lot of people mention about the integrity and the, um, the integrity of Tritech and the owners. And I just wanted to say that they, and that they're here to do, um, a reasonable and fair offer, not just to Mr. Mensch and his family, but to all the business owners in the area. But we wouldn't be here on this meeting if they had come to reasonable prices and negotiations with these families. We are having these hearings and these meetings currently because they have not. And now they are moving and forcing the town and the IDA to eminent domain or the businesses and families and homeowners in the area to force them to leave. And I don't know what country this is, but this is America, and they can come to a fair price. I read it in the Newsday on Monday that this project is estimated at seven-hundred-and-fifty million dollars. Now, I'm not counting that money, nor should anyone, but I think that they can come to a reasonable offer, not just for the Mensch family, as I said before, but to all the property owners and homers in the area who have been here for years and are just trying to support themselves and their families. And I thank you for your time, Your Honor, and to the IDA and all the council members and the town supervisors for this opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jordan. All right, at this point, I do not see any further hands raised. Mr. Belniak, do you agree?
I'm confirming that, Judge.
Yes.
Correct.
Right, so I will then say, this is the last opportunity for anyone who has not spoken yet to provide the public comment, uh, in this hearing. If there is none, I will close the public comment portion, but there will be further instructions, uh, to provide written comments to the IDA uh, at a later point within the next thirty days. I see nothing further. All right, so I'm going to close the public comment portion of this hearing. The hearing will be kept open, and I believe Mr. Braun will address that now.
Yes, Your Honor, to conclude, I will now entertain a motion to conclude the meeting. Are you hear a motion from the IDA Board?
Don't move, Felix Grucci.
Is there a second?
Second, Marty Callahan.
On the vote, Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Grucci?
Yes.
Fabrocky?
Yes.
Mr. Polikowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Shite?
Yes.
Mr. Braun votes yes. The motion carries. As indicated by the judge, the public hearing will remain open for thirty days until June eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two, as mentioned earlier, to accept written correspondence sent to the IDA.
At this point, I'm sorry, Ms. Mulligan. Ye- yes, thank you very much, all. This hearing is now concluded. Thank you.
Thank you.